I would now call to order the regular meeting of the Bryan Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business. Topics must be limited to three minutes. Comments concerning specific students or personnel will be heard in closed section. I now ask that you turn off all sound on your electronic devices. So, we have the pledges. Next, we have Kemp Elementary, Principal Allison Bogan, for the American flag. Come on down.
Good evening, I'm Allison Bogan, Principal at Kemp Carver, and I am proud to have our junior ambassador students here. We're gonna go ahead and start with the pledges, so if you guys will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and next we have Dr. Velez with Jones Elementary.
So we have our flag team who was trained to do the flags at Jones by the A&amp;M Corps of Cadets, and they're here to do the Texas pledge. Ready, begin.
The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You can introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is Angel, and my last name is Ros.
My name is Ernesto Noro.
My name is Erin Flores.
My name is Jose Perez.
My name is Brady Navarro.
My name is Fabian Charles.
My name is Jackson Curtis, and I go to Kemp Elementary.
My name is Marcus Alvarado, and I go to Kemp Elementary.
My name is Adrian Bedford, and I go to Kemp Carver Elementary, Grade 4.
My name is Jayden Cleveland, and I go to 4th grade Kemp Carver Elementary.
My name is Bella, and I go to 3rd grade, and I'm from Kemp Carver Elementary.
Thank you to our students, it's always a pleasure to have them up here. Next, we have citizens' comments. Mrs. Lee, do we have any comment cards?
Yes.
Okay. So, next we have spotlights. So we'll go with Bowen Elementary first, the Elementary Teacher of the Month, introduced by Principal Kimberly Guess.
Hello, I am so excited tonight to introduce to you Ms. Jill Minatrea. Ms. Minatrea has been a math teacher on the Bowen campus for many years. She's spent her career in star-tested classrooms teaching math. She dedicates each day to ensuring that her students have the opportunity to master what is being taught to them. In just a few minutes in Jill's room, you're gonna wish you had a math teacher just like her. She gives a safe place where students are encouraged to be vulnerable and to give their very best shot at what they've got in front of them. Math can be a tough spot for some kids. Jill helps students be courageous when attacking math skills. She plans lessons that are so tightly aligned, working with students at their own instructional levels to help them find daily success. Learning is required in Ms. Minatrea's classroom. There's not, there's no question about that, we got math to learn. Jill's focus on student achievement is evident in district data. Anyone can see those numbers. But it shines even brighter with her ability to motivate every student to achieve in her classroom. She keeps in close contact with her families and builds strong lasting relationships. Tonight, we congratulate Jill Minatrea.
And we also want to thank Truist Bank for their gift cards as well for the teachers.
Congratulations. We've got husband coming up for the...
Family too?
It's, it's a teaching family, this is, this is coach from Rutter High School.
Beautiful, thank you. Now we have our Secondary Teacher of the Month, DAEP, introduced by Principal Casper.
As you'll see, it's not Dr. Casper, she's out sick today. So, I'm the Assistant Principal, Amanda Godfrey, and I'm gonna be introducing y'all to my intermediate DAEP teacher, Ms. Sharon Nauvoo. We're excited to nominate Ms. Nauvoo tonight. She should be the Teacher of the Month for her willingness to be flexible, to be calm, her passion for gaining information and assistance to meet the needs of her students, and organizational skills. Sharon serves as the intermediate DAEP teacher for Bryan ISD. She is the only intermediate DAEP teacher. She serves students in 5th and 6th grade that are removed from their home campus due to a violation of the student code of conduct. Her classroom is a revolving door, where students are assigned from 15 days to the entire school year based on the consequence they receive from their home campus. Her work ethic is remarkable with the way that she manages and serves students with so many different academic levels and... Excuse me. She serves general education students as well as special education students with varying IEPs and goals. She helps to maintain the academics of students who have made a bad choice and also help them learn from their mistakes and gain the necessary skills to make better choices in the future. She arrives every day to work with each student she has and help that student grow both academically and socially. She teaches social skills and roleplays different behavior situations. She contacts home campuses in regards to concerns, both academically and behaviorally. She stays in close contact with the families. She has between 1 and 15 students in her class this year. She's developed a daily schedule to meet the very needs of her students. She's an eternal optimist. She remains calm and interacts positively with her students. She's worked diligently to gain access to materials to meet the needs of her students. And she has a heart for kids, but especially those kids who seem to struggle behaviorally. She truly believes that all children deserve to be treated fairly and in an appropriate manner. Ms. Nauvoo is committed to excellence and wants to be the one for her students. She works with staff across the district to ensure she has everything she needs to better serve her students. She is a great asset to our district, and we are proud to have her as the Teacher of the Month.
Next, we have Campus Spotlight for Jones Elementary, Dr. Alma Velez.
Good evening. So, we, while we do have amazing professionals and clubs and organizations at Jones, I chose to spotlight our STEM Club, which is run by three amazing professionals, Mr. James Wood, Ms. Sally Ryan, and Ms. Monica Pichardo. And I'm going to let them speak to you about what STEM is and what it has done for our campus. And while they're presenting, we will also have some pics showing on, on the slideshow.
I'm James Wood from, from Jones. Kids are naturally curious, they like to take things apart, put things back together again. So six years ago, Sally and I got together and decided we're gonna, we're gonna start a club that lets kids do just that. And so we opened up the STEM Club, we thought we'd have about 20 students, we ended up with 60. And we wanted to teach the kids to be problem solvers, to think strategically, and to, to learn how to work with, with, collaboratively with their peers. So, with the 60 kids, we partnered with the Hispanic Professional Engineers at Texas A&amp;M, and they provide mentors and volunteers every week when we have our meetings. And the great thing about that is most of them have been our first-in-their-family college students. And so they mentor our, our students and they encourage them to pursue careers in STEM and advanced academics. So we brought a few of the kids to share their, their ideas of STEM.
And the teacher messed up in practice, so she gets cards. Okay, so I'm just gonna do a question and answer with them. Now you'll have to bear with us, some of our kids are translating for other kids. So, we're gonna go ahead and start with Jose. Jose, we recently went on a field trip to Texas A&amp;M to participate in the Physics Fair. Will you tell us about your experience at the festival?
My experience at the festival of, of the Texas A&amp;M campus was good because the, the experiments over there was fun because of all the experiments they had over there that they made us do and which, which really teach us on some few new things.
Jose, can you tell us about some of the activities? You were telling me about some of the activities that you really liked at the Physics Fair.
My favorite activities at the, at the Texas A&amp;M campus was when you, whenever you have a stool in front of you, and then whenever you have to sit down. You have two weights on each hand, and then they're both like five pounds. And whenever you spread out your hands, it goes a little bit faster. But whenever you put in the weights, like on your heart, it's gonna go a little bit slower. My other favorite experiment over there was how whenever there was two wire, two big wires, and then a big electricity wire connecting to those. And then, and then you had to put an empty can of soda in the middle of it. And then with all that power, if you turn it on, since the metal can is metal, it's gonna crush it up because of all the power. And lastly, my favorite experiment over there was whenever there was, whenever there was a cannon, and, and whenever they put in some liquid or some type of stuff in it, which made it explode all the balls in the air.
Were there a lot of balls and a lot of water?
Yes.
And he was watching what they put in there, so if you hear something at Jones, just know Jose has figured out how to do the experiment. This is Nashley. Nashley, can you tell them what grade you're in? Que grado?
3rd grade.
3rd grade. Okay, so we also went to Texas A&amp;M on a field trip for the Chemistry Fair. Did you like attending the event?
Yes, because we can go around Texas A&amp;M, and we can into someone's classroom. And they like a teacher, I'm reading a book, and then fire goes up.
She said fire went out of the book. Yeah, keep going. Oh, no. You go ahead and say it, and then Elizabeth will try to...
Había una piscina donde podías hacer burbujas. No. Y había como una silla donde tú te podías sentar. Tenías dos pesas en las manos, y si las acercabas a tu corazón, iba rápido alrededor. Y si estirabas tus manos, iba más lento.
There was two chairs, and if you stretch out your hands, it would go fast. And if you put them near your heart, it would go slow.
You didn't tell them about the other one that you liked?
Nerla y Kipu. Tenías como un palo de diferentes figuras, y tenías que hacer burbujas. Tenías que sumergir el palo en la piscina, y la tenías que mezclar. Y también le tenías que elevar en el aire para que se hicieran grandes burbujas.
Wow.
She said that there was a place where you had a stick, and then there was different type of shapes on that stick, like squares, triangles, and more other shapes. And whenever you put it inside the, the big bowl of bubbles, and then you shake it up a little bit, and then whenever you pop it up, it comes up with a big bubble, and then you can make a big bubble with it.
And one last question for you, Nashley, is, do you wanna go to college?
Yes, to Texas A&amp;M.
Alright. This is Jabria. Jabria, during our STEM Club meetings, there are a variety of experiments. What are some of your favorite STEM activities?
Some of my favorite activities are when we have made slime. We have did explosion with yeast from make bread, and an egg one, whenever we had corded boxes and straws and tape and scissors. And we had to see whose egg can survive.
Did your egg survive?
No.
So we have to try again, right, just like scientists?
Yes.
Can you describe your experience with STEM in one or two words?
Fun and interesting.
Awesome. So, this is Elizabeth, and Elizabeth told me what she wanted to be when she grows up, so I want you guys to hear. What do you wanna be when you grow up, Elizabeth?
I wanna be an astronaut.
An astronaut. What made you wanna be an astronaut when you grew up, Elizabeth?
Because once you taught us planets, and I became interested and started searching them up, and I, and since that day, I wanted to be an astronaut.
That's exciting. Of course, you're going to Texas A&amp;M too, right?
Yeah.
So, I have a question for all of you, and we practiced this, so you're all gonna take a turn. How does it make you feel to have volunteers from the university tell you about their experiences in STEM and in college?
I feel thankful because if we didn't have them, we would, we would just have three teachers teaching us, and they would have been, they would not have been more like so little stations, and we wouldn't have any, like mostly anything to do.
Awesome, you wanna pass it to Jose?
I was really grateful because of how, how hard they worked to make us understand the experiments that they teach us, and then how much it actually really teach us and made us learn new things.
I am grateful because someone's can't talk in Spanish.
I feel grateful because there's like, if there were just only like two teachers or three, there wouldn't be a lot of groups of people that got to do some science experiments.
Okay, and last question. How, how has the STEM Club helped you at school? I don't think we had that one before. One of you guys can tell me, do you think STEM helped you during school?
Yes.
Okay, how?
Because it's like, it helps me more in science. Like, because this is my first and last year, and I didn't know a lot about science, so this year I decided to join science and STEM and see how much I can learn more about science.
Anybody else?
STEM Club has helped me with science and maybe some math because some of the experiments, some of the experiments actually teach me some of the math, but mostly it was about the science that teach me.
Guys, stay here, because after we've turned, I got one more question.
Right, this year we have over 80 students in our STEM Club and about 20 parents that help us out with activities and field trips. The STEM Club has a huge impact on our families, and thank you for this opportunity to showcase our students.
And the last question for the kids is, do you like STEM Club?
Yes.
That was very exciting. Do you like STEM Club?
Yes.
Very good. You guys wanna take a picture, take a photo? And we thank you, Jones Elementary. Future actives. That's right. STEM Club leaders, as well as those students, thank you. Thank you again. Alright, so next we have the Program Spotlight for Dual Language.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Malina, I'm the Director of Bilingual Education. Thank you, Ms. Carabine and Board of Education, for giving us the opportunity to spotlight and to celebrate a phenomenal group of students, their parents, campus administration, and teachers that embody a powerful word, perseverance. This group of students is the 6th grade dual language students at Jane Long, Jane Long Intermediate School. Almost all of these students started the program in 2016, 2017 as kindergartners, and now complete the program seven years later, seven years later. And tonight, we celebrate their perseverance. Please allow me to tell you a little bit about the dual language program, and then we're gonna hear from our students and also a teacher from Jane Long Intermediate School. Right now, our, we have our dual language program, which is K through 6th grade. We have three elementary campuses, Henderson and Johnson. Crockett, we expanded to Crockett in 2019, 2020. We have, where's Desiree Caperton? Dr. Caperton, there you are. Lobos, Lobos in the house. We have on Jane Long Intermediate School. In 2022, 2023, we have 30 students completing the program, 30 students. In 24, 25, we will have 64 students completing the program, bringing us to 83% completion rate. We are super excited about that, super excited. Right now, we are going to hear from one of, a few of our students on what it means to be committed to the program. Analia, are you ready?
I started the dual language program in Bryan ISD in kindergarten in 2016 at Johnson Elementary with Mr. Mosqueda as my teacher. Empecé el programa dual en Bryan ISD en kinder en 2016 en la escuela de primaria Johnson con el maestro, Mr. Mosqueda.
I started the dual language program in Bryan ISD in kindergarten in 2016 at Henderson with Ms. Cortez as my teacher. Empecé el programa dual en Bryan ISD en kinder en 2016 en la escuela de Henderson con la maestra, Ms. Cortez.
Dr. Malina? Here's, here's the...
I started the dual language program in Bryan ISD in kindergarten in 2016 at Johnson Elementary with Mr. Mosqueda as my teacher. Empecé el programa dual en Bryan ISD en kinder en 2016 en la escuela de Johnson con el maestro, Mr. Mosqueda.
I started the dual language program in Bryan ISD in kindergarten in 2016 at Henderson Elementary with Mrs. Cortez as my teacher. Empecé el programa dual en Bryan ISD en kinder en 2016 en la escuela de Henderson Elementary con la maestra, Mrs. Cortez.
We're gonna hear from some students right now about what it means to be, what the word perseverance in, in Spanish and in English.
Persistence, resistencia.
Tenacity, tenacidad, determina, determination, determinación.
Johnson Elementary, primaria Johnson.
Henderson Elementary, primaria Henderson. Continued effort, esfuerzo continuo.
Purpose, objetivo, esté firmeza.
Not giving up, no rendirse.
Commitment, compromiso.
Dedication, dedicación.
Endurance, resistencia.
Stamina, agumen, aguente.
I can do hard things, puedo hacer cosas difíciles.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mrs. Perez, I'm the dual language teacher at Jane Long Intermediate. Okay, so the dual language high school credit and college credit. In the 6th grade, they get credit by exam, and what it is, they take a four-skill language proficiency test that'll test the listening, speaking, writing, and reading. And the students who pass will be awarded the Spanish 1 High School credit. In 2021, 2022, 96% of the students passed and were awarded the High School credit. Middle school grades 7 through 8, students will have the opportunity to earn Spanish 2 and 3 High School credit. High school courses for college credit, students will have the opportunity to earn college credit in the Advanced Placement courses. So, at this time, we are going to have a ceremony at Jane Long on May 18th, 2023, at 6:00 PM, and we would like to invite all the parents. Everybody's welcome to come and join us. Thank you.
You wanna stay up here for a photo? You want to stay up here for a photo? Some of you around the end there, come to the back.
Is Ms. Caperton still sheers?
Yeah, come on up here with your babies. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm telling you. But that's so good. They need something to work that hard. They deserve it. Woo-hoo. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you again, Jane Long. Next, we'll have the superintendent update.
Good job. Thank you. Congratulations to all of our students. We're super proud of you and we know this would not be possible without our fabulous uh staff. So to the administrators and the teachers, thank you for what you do every single day to position our students for excellence. Much appreciate it. It looks like our future is bright. We have a lot of Texas A&amp;M future Aggies in the room with us tonight, so.
Exactly. Get them in there. Thank you.
That's right. I noticed they're all wearing maroon, so uh, yeah, thank you. Well, that was a hard, this is a hard act to follow because uh it's always a great night to celebrate our students and our staff. Uh, but there are many things happening right now. It is the busiest time of the year in Bryan ISD. It was again, hard to narrow the focus to determine how to, how to brag on so many wonderful things. But this one, I, I wanted to draw your attention because Mr. Mike Martindale, the superintendent in Bryan, and I'm sorry, College Station ISD, and I were actually invited to go and speak to the American Institute of Architects and all of our local engineers. And this was a great experience because they shined a light on both districts. In fact, we bragged that on that night, it was two districts serving one community. And we got to just talk all about the, the future of our school districts, projected enrollment, facilities, uh, you know, student celebrations, staff information, and uh the, again, these were all local architects and local engineers. So they got a really good understanding of what happens behind the scenes in our school district, in our facilities as well. They, they did ask us quite a few questions about renovation and new construction, et cetera. So it was a good night for, to brag on our school district. This was another great day, actually happening right here in this building. Uh, just a week or so ago, the uh Vikings kicking out tobacco uh organized the troops. And as you can tell by this photo, there were over one hundred Bryan ISD students repremen- representing our intermediate, middle school, and high school students. And this was all about empowering our students. It was a peer-led student leadership with steroids, talking about the importance of just saying no to vaping, tobacco, drugs, et cetera, making good choices in life. And this was an action summit, so they left with actions uh planned to go back and execute on their campuses. Again, student leaderships uh just unfolded the entire day. Super proud of them and thank you to Ms. Benford for joining us from the Health District that day as well. This is Branch Elementary hopping into learning, just another one of, one of many examples of our parent engagement in our community right now. Our schools are opening their doors, partnering with parents, bringing them into the classroom so that we can uh generalize instruction in the home. They learned a lot of really fun games and activities that night that they can take home to their families and play in their own homes. Making learning fun is what it's all about right now at Branch Elementary. We are still celebrating Bryan High School culinary students winning uh actually maintaining that big fork in their hand, that's the trophy, as they won the Taste of Aggieland. And this was all hands on deck from the Bryan High School culinary teachers and their wonderful students. And uh they were on the stage that night. Everyone there, there were hundreds of people out on uh, on this night. And uh we prevailed once again, defending the fork and so proud of our culinary kids. Just this past uh Friday and Saturday, Bryan ISD was selected to host the state invitational competition. So this is a photo of our Bryan High School Los Vikingos and they are standing there as one of the best in the state of Texas. Uh, getting to this level doesn't happen by chance. Our wonderful directors positioned these kids for success. And if you, if you were lucky enough to watch any of them perform, it was truly the best of the best across the state of Texas. And our Vikingos, while they didn't win first place, they were in the mix and they will be back. They were truly incredible, representing our community so well. And speaking of representing our community and sticking with the theme of fine arts, you're looking at the Bryan High School choir students right now. Uh, in almost every competition, competition for U I L choir, they either placed a winning sweepstakes, which is a scoring of one, the highest score possible, across the board for performance. And uh again, just uh celebrating them and thank you to their wonderful choir directors for again, positioning our students for success. And then Rutter High School also are coming off the heels of their competition for U I L choir and the same type of uh accolades for them as well. Sweepstakes and scores of excellent ratings. So we're super proud of our performing arts at Rutter High School and Bryan High School. And then today, this is breaking news, uh we are so thankful that every second grader in Bryan ISD was invited to go to Texas A&amp;M University and you heard from these students earlier, that's a big deal to get to get on a school bus and go down to the flagship university here in our backyard. They joined students, second grade students from all across uh our surrounding area, College Station, Caldwell, et cetera. They were all there learning about the importance of uh safety, bicycle safety, wearing a helmet, et cetera. And then each one of them actually received a helmet for bicycle safety. So that was a big day again for all of our second graders in the district. And then finally, uh last but not least, again, breaking news, this literally just happened minutes ago. Uh, we opened our doors this evening to celebrate the teacher incentive allotment uh recipients. We are proud to announce in Bryan ISD that we had one hundred eighty-five teachers receiving this prestigious award with a financial attachment uh with it, uh with broad representation. We had from pre-K all the, all the way through grade twelve high school, all the different campuses represented. Uh, they came in tonight just beaming with pride. So it was just a great way to recognize them and celebrate them. And um the good news with this is this is a five-year uh reoccurring investment in these teachers. So the allotment that they will receive in June will be a lump sum amount, a very significant amount that will occur for the next five years. So we're very proud of all of that uh in the award. And then all the behind the scenes, Dr. Barbara Ibarra and her team, many of the people sitting in this room worked tirelessly over the last several years to, to make this happen for our staff. So just so, so pleased that it's finally come to fruition and we were able to celebrate them in such a great way. Thank you so much.
Uh, may I add one thing if you don't mind?
Sure, sure.
Dr. Davis, um, I just wanted to say I was really, really impressed with the track meet. I did go to that and uh all of the work. I just want to thank all of the, the teachers, the, the, the coaches, the parents were there. Just the amount of energy was just absolutely fantastic. And I can't imagine coordinating that many kids in one stadium, but they did an excellent job. And I know it was a lot of work and I just wanted to thank everyone that put that on because I think after these crazy few years that we've had, it's nice to have getting back to normal and I would just like to thank everybody that put that together.
Thank you for recognizing their effort. He's referring to the fourth grade track meet. They came back with a vengeance this year because it was canceled because of COVID in recent years. And one of the teachers actually said it best. He said, I didn't realize how much I missed it until we had it, you know, returned this year. It was good for all of us, the teachers, the students, the parents, everyone. It was truly a great day in Bryan ISD. Thank you for attending.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We're so grateful to be a part of Bryan ISD and all of its academic as well as community engagement as well. Uh, next we'll have the board committee meeting update uh for the board executive committee coming from Mrs. Benford.
Yes, thank you. The executive board committee met with some of the um executive staff last week, um, Dr. Harland, Dr. Davis, myself, Ms. Carabine, Ms. Ibarra, um, Mr. Beesaw, Ms. Warren, and of course, Ms. Lee. And we discussed, uh, just general discussion on the board operating procedures, some things that we have been discussing as a board lately, um, updates and changes um that were being made, just looking at how we need to refresh those. We also talked about required training that the board is going to be um having in July with our council. It'll be some uh required legislative update training. So we have that on our calendar for July. Um, Dr. Ibarra and Ms. Warren gave us an update on the district special education program. Um, we received uh feedback from the committees, the teacher advisory committee regarding a software um problem that we want to look into purchasing. It's going to help us identify some needs that we have to make that a whole better program for our special ed department. So we're excited about that and the changes that it's going to bring for us. We also talked about uh community partnership, something that's in the plans, but we're really um working out the final details of partnership with uh Head Start and Bryan ISD. So we'll get more information on that at a later date as we finalize some details and receive more information on how we're going to establish that partnership to make it smooth for both groups. Um, the Aspire Academy, we are working on the framework for the six pathways on that. Um, committees that have been established of district, campus staff, um higher education staff, different industry leaders. So we're excited about that framework and the path to that. And then we were also uh briefed from Ms. Carabine about the administration, um, about strengthening our family engagement through our community partnerships. Just what we just saw on the screen, how we can get the parents back in the school, back on the campuses, establish some stronger partnerships with these parents to let them know that our doors are open. We welcome them, we want them in the school, and we want to have partnership with them again like we had before COVID. We want to try to reestablish that, but stronger for all of kids, our parents, everyone. And that was it.
Alright, thank you for that, Ms. Benford. Uh, next we have up information items. First, we'll discuss the twenty twenty bond oversight update. With Mr. Buckner.
Okay, so just a kind of a quick update on um kind of be presented tomorrow too, to our bond oversight committee. But uh you get a little preview of that. So if you're on our bond oversight committee as well, you're going to get to see it twice. So this rendering is actually uh just taken recently from um a drone shot. We have a uh part of the project with Drumala is they have an entity that comes out and and takes time-lapse photos and everything of this and, and that is just a couple of weeks ago. The, looking at the front entry of, of Sadberry. Kind of go through our, kind of our normal, how we go through the meetings. Like you can see, we have had multiple meetings with bond oversight starting in March of twenty twenty-one. And we have them planned out through November of twenty-four as we go through the uh, through the bond projects with April eighteenth, tomorrow night being our next one. And then just kind of our purpose, it is a uh working in advisory capacity with the administration, kind of go over the status of the projects, expenditures, um and then from that, we report status and findings to uh the Bryan ISD board on a periodic basis. So as you know, our bond, it was a hundred and seventy-five million dollar bond that was improved, approved in November of twenty twenty. To uh the most recent numbers, we have spent a little over a hundred and seventeen million of that um, hundred and seventy-five. Of course, not, some of that is just in POs and everything as encumbered in that. Number will go down with contingencies or anything and every, as we close projects out and get uh funds back from projects. But um we are pretty much on schedule with, with all of our projects. So kind of a run through, running through these projects. First one, one of the, the two bigger ones, um one is OW Sadberry Intermediate School. Um, it is still on schedule to reach substantial completion the first week of June with kids arriving um in August of twenty-three. And then uh finishing out second phase, once um Halliburton gets complete, we'll finish that out and that should be around sometime in the fall of twenty-four, be a hundred percent complete with Sadberry. Currently, um, there's pictures coming up later, but Sadberry um furniture is scheduled to be delivered mid-June. Uh, take about a week or two to get that installed. Um, flooring is going in, the colors are going up on the walls. So it is uh very quickly turning into a school and each day it's, something else is, has changed to get it that much closer. So it is going along um very well. Halliburton, um we broke ground, we had a groundbreaking ceremony in January and currently, right now, we are um drilling the piers for the foundation. That should be completed towards the end of next week. Uh, but we are looking at that one with the steel for the building being delivered around mid-May and start going vert- not mid-May, mid-June and start going vertical mid-June um with that uh Viva Road. I know that was a hot topic and we did a change order on that a few weeks ago or uh month or so ago. But that one, they are clearing that out and we should be um close to having a, the subgrade done and ready to start doing that road here probably in June with the subgrade being ready for inspection uh towards the end of May. So that one is weather pending, it's all outside, so we, that one deals with the weather more than, a lot more than Sadberry does. Uh, then you have the P A improvements, which is going, the classroom additions and party maintenance. That's still here in our in-progress projects because we are still working through punch list on, on that project. Um, that when, once we get through punch list, um, we had some issues come up with the flooring and those will be addressed this summer. Once the kids are out of the building, we can uh get the flooring addressed, but we had um, we had some issues with the wax that was put on, so it's caused some problems and we'll get that addressed this summer and get it replaced. Currently with district fencing, that is out for bid right now. We will open that when the bids up, open in a couple of weeks and then we will, I will be back in the boardroom the May night meeting for um consideration of that contract for whichever um entity. Is that, that one's awarded to. Then through the bond, it's ongoing with fine arts, fine arts instruments and equipment. The fire alarm replacements, phase one's been completed, phase two. We have two left in phase two to be completed and those are, we gave them till the end of summer of twenty-three. There was a material shortage for fire alarms there for a while, so they're trying to catch up. But MC Harris Annex and Neil Elementary will be done before the end of summer is complete. Phase three roofing, y'all approved that contract in December. And they have already started on Kemp and Ross. And then Mitchell will start as the day school gets out. Next day they will start working on Mitchell. That one's a little more um in-depth and uh be better when no one's there at the building. Then the district-wide MEP project, this is the design-build project that has been here in the boardroom for a few board meetings now with the uh different steps of selecting a um design-build firm, of which later tonight, be asking for consideration of contract for that project, get that one moving. And then these two are also, um, these are complete, they're pending closeout. This is actually on the consent agenda items here uh tonight for, to close out the projects for Long and Rayburn, both with less man roofing. Those are complete, so if you drive by those, you do, they do have a new metal roof on those and then um all of our completed projects are the phase one fire alarms, um, partial of the phase two, a chiller replacement at Fannin, the sewer line at C-Tech, the uh air handler units for the Bryan High Fieldhouse, um, SFA Annex, that one's been closed out, phase one of bus purchases, a chiller replacement at Branch, the roof replacement at Crockett and Jones Elementary's, uh the fencing at Merrill Green Stadium, the purchase of the land for the Halliburton complex, the uh, some black box improvements at Bryan High and a um get the gate at C-Tech into their second driveway has been uh completed as well. So there's been a lot of projects coming and going. And then this is just the rendering of OW Sadberry Senior Intermediate School, some pictures of the exterior. So the front one, that's the one you saw on the front page of this, and then the uh, the two of the um back of the property with the outdoor learning classroom. And those are looking at into the um, the one on my right is showing the library. And the one on the bottom left, my bottom left is aiming towards the cafeteria with the outside eating area under the canopy over there. The canopy on the learning classroom has not been installed yet. The canopy on the learning classroom has not been installed yet, so it's not 100% complete. But it will have a canopy over the seating area. And then, the, some pictures of the interior with the various pods, the yellow pod, for some reason, I did not have a picture of that one. But we have the orange pod, the purple pod, and the teal pod. The library in the top middle, then the, the, a picture of the basketball, the gymnasium on the, in the bottom middle. They've started the stain on it. You can see how the three-point area has a slightly darker shade than the rest of the court. And then, just some of the architectural lighting in the facility. And then, some pictures of the Rutter addition. These have been out there for a little bit since it opened in January with students. Then, the Halliburton Auxiliary Complex with the rendering of it. And then, just some site photos of the site. This was before the previous rainstorm because you can see the ground. So, sump pumps had to take a lot of water out of the various areas. But you can see they have done, they have cleared it. Viva Road is ongoing, and the, the piers are starting, they started last week, and those will go on for, for this week and into next week. Those will be complete. It's kind of a quick overview of all of our projects.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner. Do we have any questions?
I've got one question, and that has to do with one project listed on here, but the project was completed. But the fencing around Merrill Green, where we had a vehicle take out a section of that fencing. How long, I mean, and when we're talking about fencing, obviously, when we're talking to the community, fencing is important for many different reasons. And then, an accident like that happens, and it's like weeks, months before it gets fixed. How, you know, is there a timeline on getting it fixed? Or is there some way we can accelerate that timeline?
I'm going to go on clarity. I think maintenance is kind of handling getting someone out there to replace that. But it shouldn't take too, too terribly long to get materials in. There's not as much of a backlog of materials now as there was a while back. So, I don't know if we've.
And I guess, I, I mean, I'll certainly wait for an answer as well. But I, I think one thing, I, I know with the playground a couple of years ago, it was we were waiting on insurance and waiting on all that. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we weren't waiting on an insurance claim or something artificial.
No, no, it'll be, there, yeah, there will be an insurance claim and everything. But where that is in that process, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is we're working with the insurance company now, they've gone out to assess it and.
Yeah, okay. So, I want to make sure, and I realize it's the stadium fencing, it's not, you know, we, we're, there's protection there now from balls and stuff going into, to the road.
The snow fence doesn't fit in with the ornamental right there.
Yes, if we get, you know, if we have one of the other fences hit, you know, it, it's, if it is a security, if part of the security perimeter is that fence, we need to make sure that we have a plan in place to get something there further rapidly.
Yes.
And that's there, the driver's insurance, I assume, is the one that would, or do we know, just curious. Did somebody take liability, I assume, responsibly?
That's my understanding is we.
That's what we're working on.
Yes, yes.
Say too much, okay, thank you.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, that's what, that's what we're working on right now. But we'll, we'll get the fence done, and if we have to, and then figure that out.
Reimburse like.
Perfect, thank you.
That's a good question.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner. Next, we'll have the community eligibility provision update.
Hello, I'm Cindy Friar, I'm Director of School Nutrition Services, and I'm going to give you a quick update of over community eligibility provision because many of you probably are not familiar with it. So, do I have a clicker? Oh, I do. Okay, first of all, CEP stands for Community Eligibility Provision. And CEP allows qualifying schools to serve free meals to all enrolled students for up to a four-year period. You can group schools as individual schools, you can group them together, or you can do an entire district, as long as they meet participation requirements, which I'm going to review. So, quick, oh, you know what? To, so what makes CEP different is that in a traditional meal program that we were running, I mean, it's the same program. We still run the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program. But in the traditional program, we were collecting free and reduced meal applications. In the new program, we're actually getting data information uploaded every month from the state. So, we're looking at information that's coming from families that are participating in temporary assistance to needy families or in the SNAP program. And we also look at students that are homeless or in the migrant program. And then, what we have to do is identify, our identified students, which are the information that's coming from these state-supported programs. And we have to look at our enrollment at each campus, the number of identified students, and then times it by 100. So, in order to participate, your school or your district or your groups of school have to be at least 40% of the ISP. And we looked at that last April. And so, that's how you identify them. And then, once you get your ISP, you have to multiply that by 1.6. And that is a, that's actually set by the federal government what the ISP will be. And that's basically an approximation of how many applications you would have collected if you weren't doing CEP. So, this determines how our meals will be reimbursed. So, they take our ISP, which is 58.47, and they multiply it by the 1.6, giving us a 93.55. So, if we claim 100,000 meals this month, then we get to claim 93,550 at the federal free rate. And then, we claim the remaining 6,450 at the paid rate. So, basically, a timeline, I'd actually moved this slide, but I forgot to send it to Clay. Anyway, in 2019-20, we actually piloted the CEP program, but we only did it at seven schools. So, we did it at five elementaries and DAP and MC Harris. Then, COVID set in, and after COVID, USDA, TDA allowed us all to operate the seamless summer program, which feeds everyone free. So, in school year 2021 and 2122, everyone ate free. So, then, when school year 2223 rolled around, it just was the right fit to just go ahead and implement it district-wide. Our ISP numbers were actually higher because a lot of parents lost work during or immediately following COVID. And so, plus, when we piloted it back in 1920, it was very confusing to the parents because if you had children that went to those, those elementaries, they had, they didn't have to do anything. But if they had an older sibling that went to a middle school or a high school, then they had to put in an application, or if you moved to a school. So, we were just able to group our schools together to get our ISP number where it is. So, basically, CEP has been beneficial to everyone. In my opinion, all of the students, regardless of their income, enjoy a stigma-free lunch. Everyone's eating free. We got to eliminate the charge policy, which we had to implement. I think our student debt in previous years had gotten up to 15,000, and then, we had to implement a policy, and it was coming down. But our cafeteria cashiers and managers were having to be the bad guys and enforce the charge policy. So, now, if a child forgets their money or they don't have money, it's fine, everyone gets a meal. Also, with that, students get additional benefits because we are CEP campuses, PEBT. And also, a new one that's coming is the Affordable Connectivity Program that was recently released about getting a percent off or so much off your internet bill. And then, students can still pack their own lunches if they prefer, not everyone has to participate. Parents, it was, provides decreased financial stress because, you know, times are hard for everyone. And then, also, parents don't have to fill out an individual application anymore. We spend a lot of time tracking those down, going to houses, you know, students sad, my, my mom said she was going to bring it up here today. And so, and also, lunch money, low balance notices. And so, parents don't have to worry about replenishing meal accounts, calling and saying, oh, I forgot to send the money today. And it's also very beneficial to our own employees, our teachers, our instructional aides, and for those families who always miss the cutoff by $100. They look at your annual salary and they miss the cutoff by $100. And for the school, like I said, we're not chasing down all of the applications, no, no low balance notices, checking, you know, oh, I sent money, where it must have got, someone stole their money. And then, like I said, cafeteria managers are not the bad guys in having to enforce the charge policy. And there's no more student meal debt being passed on to the school. And, you know, School Nutrition Services is a self-supporting budget. And so, this program, I did all the financials of it, and this will definitely will break even, and we could even come out ahead. And so, there are lots of times that if School Nutrition can use funds, like if you look at the seating that's been done at Bryan High or at Bryan Collegiate, food services paid for that, I think they replaced all the tables at Long and Rayburn, and we also helped with utility bills. So, any money that we have, of course, it goes back to the students. And then, the last thing was, in my opinion, at the end of the day, CEP is the same meal program, just a different reimbursement model, giving everyone, giving all families one less thing to worry about. And this year alone, 4,200 schools across the state of Texas participate in it. Some are whole districts, some are just individual schools, and some are grouped schools. Questions?
I, I think it's a great, I don't know if anyone else, I have a senior at Rutter, and he's baking lunch every day. And now, it's, it's so nice, if he forgets his lunch, he just does whatever, we, we wouldn't qualify. But it's, it's really, it is, there's no, the stigma is gone. He goes in, the baseball boys go in, sometimes they'll decide to have breakfast, and it's just a really great, it, it's, it's, it's great for the students, and we really appreciate all the work y'all done with the program.
Thank you. And like at SFA and DAVLA, we stay, we have, we stay up until nine for breakfast, so then, the student athletes can come in and get a breakfast and everything.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll have a discussion about a possible partnership for Head Start Services brought by Jennifer Warren or Dr. Yvonne.
Good evening. My daughter and my son are those that bring their lunch and eat the school lunch.
I feel your pants, it's great.
It's like, wait, you do both? Yes, they do both, yes. Tonight, I am updating the board on some conversations that we are having with BVCOG, our Brazos Valley Council of Governments, for a possible early childhood partnership with Head Start. Just to clear up what this looks like, we have BVCOG, who is the grant holder for Head Start, which is a federal program across the whole United States. And they came to us with a need to collaborate because they need space for their students. And we have space, and we would love to take on that responsibility and serve the students in our schools. We want to do that because it comes with a lot of benefits. One of the first benefits that I see right away is with special education, especially our three-year-olds, when they come into the school system to receive those special education services. We don't have a three-year-old pre-K classroom for those inclusive services, so they are served in a self-contained classroom. And we want them to have that social experience so that they learn from their gen ed peers without disabilities, just as much as possible, just like any other grade level. It increases our family engagement opportunities, and the benefits go on and on. But really, what it looks like is the resources that we can pour into a child, we could get, maximize that to even more students and an at-risk population that could come to school a year earlier. We are in the planning stages, it's just conversations at this point, but we know it's a heavy lift. A project like this is filtered in with red tape with federal regulations and such. So, we've asked our friends down the road at Texas A&amp;M University to basically hold our hand through these conversations and to facilitate that so that we don't leave any stone uncovered. And what that looks like is helping develop an MOU, identify timeline for the decision-making, making sure that we see the bigger picture from an outsider's point of view, from Texas A&amp;M's expertise. But they are also a TEA partner with that drive to create these early childhood partnerships. And so, what that means is TEA has identified a group of former superintendents, former CFOs, who have experiences in these partnerships and have put them together to help school districts and Head Start partnerships come together seamlessly. So, we are looking at, we're looking at three-year-old and four-year-old pre-K, four classrooms of each. Three-year-olds can only have up to 17 students in a classroom, so we're looking at 80 additional four-year-olds and 68 additional three-year-olds in our classrooms. It's a great benefit because we have the seats available. We get to serve students that are right here in our community, and they're going to become our students anyway when they go to kindergarten. So, we're excited to get them in the door early, give them the resources that we can. In addition to that, we have the conversation around the memorandum of understanding. It's filled with all the legal requirements, not only on the Head Start side, but also what we're required to provide for a student in pre-K. With that memorandum of understanding, the BVCOG would continue to be the grant holder and the compliance manager. We want to make sure that they stay a partner with us, that we're not taking on the full responsibility of Head Start. They will manage the compliance and manage that, the funds. We just become the contracted service so that the students come to Bryan ISD, become our students, receive our services, but then, the Head Start services poured in on top of that, so they are doubly served, and especially right for such a vulnerable population of students. So, with that being said, each student that would come into our schools that qualifies for Head Start would be a Bryan ISD student. We would receive the ADA funding on that child and all the resources that they deserve as one of our students, but then, the additional services for Head Start being poured into them. This is the beginning of the conversation. We wanted to make sure that you were informed, that we were being transparent with those conversations, and up to speed with those conversations as well. Do you have any questions?
I guess this, anytime you're getting involved with the federal government, my question would be, who's in charge here? So, do, are, are we going to provide, I'll call it the curriculum, even though it's little kids, but who's going to decide how these kids are taught?
That's the beauty of us being the contracted service. They are our students, so we would serve them exactly like we would any other student that comes in our door. So, they receive our curriculum, they follow our student code of conduct. The employees would also be Bryan ISD employees, so they follow our same standards for human resources and become a member of that campus that that might be at, and totally integrated into the system.
Thank you.
Will the parents register them at BVCOG, or will they do it through us?
They will actually register in both ways, but here at Bryan ISD. Part of the memorandum of understanding is ensuring that they are Bryan ISD students. We want to make sure that they are registered with us, but they would still have to do a registration with Head Start to make sure that they qualify and receive those services, and they can track for those compliance pieces. But it would be here at Bryan ISD, they're our students, enroll with us, and then, an additional enrollment process for Head Start, but still here.
And, and I know that we'll make it as streamlined, easy as possible. And this is kind of a first, so the way we launch it will be, you know, the way we successful in the future, I think it's really exciting.
Yes, it, it's new for us here at Bryan ISD. I've actually in two other districts monitored the Head Start partnership, so it's something I'm very familiar with. The communication piece is vital to make sure that that is streamlined, not only for the communication with the parents, but that the students never feel like that they are not a Bryan ISD student, or that, that, just much like with the food service, that there's not a stigma attached to it. It's going to be, be very much a Bryan ISD student with additional services provided to them, so we can streamline those services for them.
And they'll get those meals too.
Yes, they will, I noticed on the slide you had Head Start, keeping you in business.
Jennifer, would you mind elaborating on the MOU? I know that our attorney is taking a look at it as well as Head Start. The anticipated date for bringing into the board for, to possibly take action on it?
Yes, so this would have to be a very quick turnaround because we are looking at serving students for the '23-'24 school year, so we're talking about August. What that looks like with the MOU is we do have our MOU that was developed in partnership with A&amp;M. And our attorneys are vetting it, making sure it has all the pieces, that we're protected, and BVCOG will do the same with their attorneys. But what that looks like is potentially at our next nightly board meeting, that we're bringing something to the board to approve as far as a partnership goes so that we can roll that out as quickly as possible and get everybody in the doors and prepare over the summer for these students.
May I ask, what, what is the cost to us? Are we reimbursed, or we, how, how does that work with the additional teachers that we will have?
Very good question. Very good question. There is no additional cost to us, because if it is an additional cost, we would charge it back to the Head Start grantee. Potentially, if the MOU goes forward the way that it looks, there will be a portion of a teacher's salary provided by the Head Start grant. And then the school district would only pay the difference, which we're used to a hundred percent, so there's, we're really looking more at savings, exactly. So it would free up some of our local dollars to pay for other things, or decrease the deficit, whatever it may be. And then along with the paras, it's a very large sum of their salary would be paid for by the grantee as well. But it goes beyond the salaries, that's the biggest hit. We know that the budget, the biggest hit is going to be in our salaries and our compensation. But it's also our supplies and our materials and our training, so many other things that we will charge back to that Head Start grant and then be reimbursed for that. But many of those things are an upfront cost, and we'll know what it is, so it's not much out of pocket, it's more encumbered in our funds before that money is actually spent.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Apparently, early childhood furniture is quite expensive.
Yes, it is. Yes, I actually, my first teaching position was in Head Start. I'm very familiar with Head Start as a former teacher and a site supervisor of that. And it is quite expensive. The great thing about Head Start is they know that, and they supply their classrooms fairly well. I've made the comment several times that I could not spend my supplies and materials money as a teacher because it was so well supplied, that I couldn't find the things to pay for it. So we actually ended up pooling our money for a new playground for the campus.
Well, there is, it sounds like a comic, kind of an offside comic, but I, I know the size of that Sam's box, and it's a reference point, because we get so used to seeing high school kids, college athletes, everybody else. You know, having, having the little girl in the Sam's box as an airplane is a great reference point to the total complete other end of not where she, where she's starting versus where she's going to be in a few years.
Absolutely. And you can imagine with three-year-olds how impactful that could be to give them that extra year of education.
Maybe Sam's will give us an endorsement or something.
I'll work on that. And it's our BIS student, so we will make sure that that conversation is happened.
All righty. Thank you, Mrs. Warren, this is exciting to discuss further, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, next, moving on to our consent agenda. You all have had an opportunity to view the items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to remove or review further? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Benford, seconded by Mr. McCall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, moving on to business services. We will have Mr. Beesaw up to discuss and consider approval of a resolution to change the third-party administrator for the district's supplemental insurance projects.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Bringing forward tonight, an item to consider changing our third-party administrator for the district's supplemental insurance products. This would have no effect on the district's self-insured health or dental plans. It would only change the agent of record on our voluntary insurance projects, or products such as disability, or term life, cancer, critical illness, things like that, that are offered voluntarily to employees. The current policies, as they are right now, would remain in place through the end of twenty-three, so there'd be no disruption in any of that. Would be looking at some of the, some of those changes, possibly at the, at the open enrollment time when we get to the, to the year end. This, this group would facilitate the open enrollment process, which includes everyone's, as we go through that in October, November, selecting their insurance for the next year, the flex spending, medical reimbursement, childcare reimbursement, and those kind of things. The main reason to look at switching our third-party administrator right now, the company that, that we currently use has changed ownership, merged, or been bought out. It's negatively impacted many of the aspects of our, of our service with them, including, and not limited to, but issues with open enrollment, both system and personnel. We had some, some real difficult times this year, and the lack of customer support on that. And that, that definitely affects our employees, which i- is a major concern for us. We, we want that to go as smoothly as it can, and we, as an administration, and several people in this room spent a lot of hours working on fixing some of the issues and those things that we went through, so we're definitely looking to improve that. Reasons to choose the First Financial Group of America, which is the one we're recommending tonight. They're a larger, more financially stable company. They have a more expansive benefit package. Currently serve four hundred and thirty-five school districts and government agencies across Texas, including our neighbor to the south, College Station. One of the big advantages is they use salaried, licensed employees on their face-to-face enrollment. The current company use, they, they contract those out, they're not necessarily of the same, we would say of the same caliber, and so that's, that's created some of the issues. And this company also has outstanding references for, as we go through. There's also an identity theft protection program that's, that's in there, that's free to the employees. We currently have LifeLock, which the employees can purchase, but of course, that's added to their, to their cost. The timing to do it now is beginning this process. We can hopefully get things up and running, get in, up to speed in time to hit the hiring process through June and July for new employees, and then have everything running smoothly by the time we get to open enrollment in October or November. And so that would be our recommendation tonight, to change, change that agent of record for, through the resolution that you have there.
Kevin, I have a question.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think it's great, so how, the cyber protection, we had LifeLock or the security, and we, or the district could, could choose to pay for it?
Well,
How do we get this one free with the same quality as LifeLock?
Well, the employees have the option to purchase LifeLock, which, which I do carry. This is a, this is a different, a different one that, that is provided for free.
On top of LifeLock?
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming you can always get LifeLock, I think, you know, personally, but.
So is, so they could take this one and not have to pay for anything and still have a good protection?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I believe it's, yeah.
That's really good.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to really stress that. Younger kids will pick on, pick up on that in a heartbeat, but.
And it's not real expensive for LifeLock, I mean, it's a few dollars a month, you know, but, but as you go through, every, every dollar counts, you know, so it's just an added benefit of it.
Anything else?
I move approval of the resolution with TCG Consulting, First Financial Group of America, as a district's third-party administrator for supplemental insurance products as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion was made by Mrs. Waller and seconded by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the resolution with TCG Consulting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Beesaw presenting on the consideration of possible action to approve a contract with E3 Integral Solutions, a design-build firm to provide design-build services for the 2020 bond district-wide MEP and HVAC system project.
Okay, so like I mentioned earlier, one of these, one of the 2020 bond projects was the district-wide MEP HVAC, which is the mechanical, electrical plumbing, priority one and priority two projects in the facility assessment that was used to, through bond steering. And then if you remember, design-build was that approved procurement method, and we have, it was a two-step process of which we've been back here in the bordering for both of those steps, with the first one approving the rankings for the qualifications, and the second one, which Mr. Beesaw brought last time, was the approval of the rankings for the cost methodology. So both of those rankings, like I said, were approved in previous meetings. And then for the costing methodology, the firms who did submit on that, there were three of them. They provided us a percentage range of costs for the subcontractor markup, as well as general conditions. And from that range of percentages, we took the higher end that they gave us and applied that back to our projected budget for the project. And with that, E3 Integral Systems came in the lowest of those calculations by almost a million dollars, lower than the other two. And if this contract is approved tonight, then E3 will start working on project development and design with the total cost of this project coming back before y'all in October, November, once the, all the walks are completed, we sit down with the maintenance group, we get all the design, they bid it out, and then we will come back then with an amendment to this to, for the full project amount.
So I'm, I'm start, slowly starting to understand this process, I think. So we, we have an approval, we have their, how they plan to do their things. It's not necessarily a guaranteed maximum price, or is it, that they put out there?
No, we're doing a stipulated sum portion of it, so once we go through everything, it'll get bid, then they will come back with a cost. And with that, for instance, this is a lot of HVAC work. We get into a mechanical room, we get into a wall system, and it is more in-depth than what they thought. It doesn't come back as a change order. They're accounting for the unknowns in their price as well, so it could either, they take the risk, kind of like the guaranteed maximum price in a way, where they take the risk on, on what is found.
So I think I did hear you say something about they're bidding it out to subs, or?
Yes, sir, they will, once we get it designed and construction documents done, they will bid it out. They have a, E3 has a pool of subcontractors that they typically work with, and of course, we have some here in our district that we typically work with, and we'll give the opportunity for each of them to give a price on this pro, on this project. It is unique, a lot of subcontractors will probably try to shy away from it. One reason in particular is because it is all night work, it's after hours. So when kids are not in the building, that's when they operate. E3 was the design-build firm when we did the CECO Lone Star Project a few years ago. And contractors they brought in, of course, it was all after-hours work as well, but a lot of the campuses would come back and tell me that they never even knew the contractor was there that night. So to me, that was a good sign, that if they come in and work all night, and the next morning, teachers come in and never knew they were there, then it went successfully. But yeah, that's where, so yeah, it will be bid out at a, once we get all the design complete.
So, of course, we're gonna have the same question. Okay, so we, we, if we decide to go ahead and use this E3 company, then say they tell us it's gonna be two million dollars, then that's what they work with, I, I, what's, once they go to their contractors, I don't understand how we get a firm price, or when we get a firm price.
So we have, in the facility assessment, is a total list of all the projects that are encompassed in this. What the process will be, we will sit down with our maintenance personnel and go through these line by line by line to see, hey, has this project been, have y'all already completed this project, or does this need to stay as a project? After we do that, then we will go through with, with the firm, and we will start doing walks of all these campuses, all the projects, so they get their eyes on them, go through it, and then they will start working on design of the project. Through that, once design is reviewed and pretty much signed off by the district, as well as our third-party engineer, which is required as a design-build process, we have a third-party review engineering firm already hired. They are just, they're just waiting for this to go. Once it's all reviewed and signed off, then it will go for cost, for bidding. And once we get that number back, where everyone's good with it, then it will come to y'all for, for, for approval.
Okay, so I guess, I don't understand, if we're picking someone, but we're not really picking a price?
We're picking like the general contractor per se.
What you like about them?
So they serve as general contractor and design engineer. And then, so they will oversee the project, they're, they are physically not doing the work. They will hire it out to a subcontractor, that's where we get the pricing from.
Okay. But Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, when we went through the bond steering process, we have a rough estimate with an anticipated budget. I know, of course, that was pre-pandemic, et cetera.
That number is just under eighteen point eight million dollars.
Right, so we have a number in mind with a whole laundry list of, you know, work that needs to be done. But when he says, have we completed some of it? Well, fortunately and unfortunately, when the two hailstorms hit, we, we incurred a lot of damage on many of our campuses, and we had to do a lot of repair and replacement, that was covered by insurance. So we can back some of that work out of the plan, if you will. Then, of course, sometimes you have HVAC and chillers and boilers, et cetera, that go down that maybe we didn't have in the list initially, and then construction prices have gone crazy since the pandemic. But we do have that starting mark, so if it gets too far outside of that, we will know something's, that something's wrong. And then, of course, the company, when they're looking at who is submitting for bids, will use that as a benchmark as well.
And then some of these projects, like, maintenance may have already completed them. It may have been a, during bond steering, it may have been a priority two. Then over a summer, it turned into a priority one very quickly, and maintenance went ahead and fixed it at that time, so that may just come off the project. So that number, yes, that's where we're starting, and hopefully when I come back in.
And what is their, what is their fee to do this?
Um, well, there, we don't have design fees, we have the subcontractor markup and the general condition. So that total, they are roughly at fifteen point two five percent on the high end. It was a range, and like I said, we use the highest part of that range for all three firms, just to do apples to apples. It wouldn't be fair if I used one of them, they're low, one they're mid, and one they're high, so we just chose the high as the worst case, and applied that back to our project budget. So they, they came in lower, the next closest one was about five percent higher.
Is it a true statement that many districts, especially our size, are using the design-build method? Because it's so cumbersome with, like you said, night work, and depending on the needs of the campus, ages of, again, HVAC, chillers, the complexities of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, that one person, like a general contractor, is managing all of it? They're, they, they're in charge of all the subcontractors?
For this type of project, yes, it, design-build would fit in best, in my opinion, for this type of project. I know Legends Event Center, for instance. City of Brian used design-build to build that. There's different avenues, there's different methods inside design-build. But for me, with this one, there's so many kind of unknowns with MEP work, because you don't know what's inside the building. No matter how good our as-bills are, they may or may not tell you what's behind that wall. We've run into that multiple times. So something could be easy on the outside, but once you get into it, of course, it could turn into a huge ordeal of a project, and that's part of, with design-build, that's part of the risk that the design-build firm takes, is that risk of what is necessarily behind the walls that we can't see.
And they're paid off of the charges from the subs, is that?
They will make up, they will, there will be a design fee, and that will all be in the number that comes back in October, November. With approval will be all of their, the whole project cost with fees and everything associated into it.
All broken down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, isn't it with electronics and digital and the, the way things are now, so much more involved and tedious, it's their responsibility to make everything match? Is that right?
Yes, it will all, yes, it'll work as it's supposed to, and it'll communicate together.
Right, so I, I mean, I think of that as opposed, because they're, like the engineer that puts it all together and makes sure it all fits together at the end, as opposed to this, like plumbers, electricians, cement, you know, foundation, all those different things. These guys make it all work and assure us that it's all going to electronically and digitally.
It will operate within how we need it to now, and.
And so they're, we're, we're looking to them to guarantee, you know, as much, I mean, right.
Some of these projects.
Before it's turned over back to us.
And even before that, that ultimate checks and balances is the third-party engineer. So they come in and look over their shoulder to tell us. To tell us if it's where it needs to be or not.
Keep us from getting a limit.
They will look over the shoulder of both of us and make sure everything's going as is, we're getting what we paid for, and it's operating like it's supposed to. Like, for instance, some of the, some of the items in here are redoing some of our controls. Some of our controls, we have to basically keep a computer alive with an old operating system to make sure our controls, because it's no longer supported on newer operating systems. So some of that is bringing that into our current operating systems and making those worthwhile today. So there's a litany of projects, from chillers, to air handling units, to controls, to some plumbing items. A majority of it, I would probably say 85% of the project is HVAC, though.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve the contract with E3 Integral Solutions as a design-build firm for the 2020 Bond District-Wide MEP and HVAC System Project.
A motion was made by Mr. Gonzalez and seconded by Mrs. Waller for the board to approve the contract with E3 Integral Solutions as a design-build firm for the 2020 Bond District-Wide MEP and HVAC System Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Bubin. Well, now moved on, on to teaching and learning. To discuss and consider approval of a purchase over $50,000 for the advancement via industrial determination, AKA Avid.
Good evening. Christina Richardson, I'm the Director of Advanced Academics, and I am here tonight with an amazing group of principals who are going to help present to you why we should expand Avid in our district. So the first thing is just, why Avid in general? Why is it anywhere in our district? And this is in response to feedback that we got from teachers and administrators, that students need support. They need to learn how to be a student. They need those academic skills, especially our students who are in advanced academics. We have open enrollment for advanced academics. Any student who wants to can give it a shot. But for a lot of those students, once they get home, they don't have a support system to help them. And that's what Avid brings in, is some of that support to help students be more successful. We have had Avid in our district before, actually from about 1998 to 2011. I was one of the, the former Avid teachers at Bryan High School. And at that time, we actually earned distinctions for Bryan High School, was a national demonstration site, as was Jane Long when it was a middle school. My understa- I wasn't in a position where I was in on the conversations, why it went away, but there were some financial things that Avid required at the time that made it difficult to maintain. Every single summer, you had to send a team of eight to a summer conference, which can be expensive. You had to have paid tutors. Again, that can be very expensive. Since then, Avid has done some things in their costs that have helped alleviate those. For example, tutors, you can now have volunteers. You can have peer tutors. You can still have paid tutors, but to meet those certification elements, you have more choices. And the same with the professional development. You don't have to send a full team, you absolutely can, but you have more flexibility in, do you send a team in person? Do you send somebody virtually? And so, they, they've arranged it now to meet the needs of a district regardless of their financial situation. The goals of Avid are to bring rigorous academic preparedness, opportunity knowledge. And so, yes, we get them that support they need in the classroom, we get them those skills, but what do they do with them? They have to have that opportunity to set goals, to look at college and careers, and to know what are those pathways open to them. And then student agency, helping students become advocates for themselves. That student who sits in the back of the classroom, who's quiet and won't ask a question, can never get help because nobody knows they need help. And one of the things that Avid really does is help students understand how to advocate for themselves. So I have my first two principals up, Tommy Roberts and Sarah Roeda, who are currently implementing Avid on their campuses, are gonna talk about some of the successes that they've had.
Good evening. So I'm Tommy Roberts, I'm the principal at Bryan Collegiate. And so last year, we began our planning year for Avid. Oh, clicker. Clay, okay, there we go. Excuse me. So last year was our planning year, this year was our full year of implementation. So we've seen a lot of good fruit come from implementing Avid as an early college high school. Excuse me. One of the things that we have wrapped our arms around as a campus is the implementation of focus note-taking. So we've done that as a, as a strategy campus-wide, all content areas, all grade levels, so all, all students. And it has helped strengthen our tutorial process at Bryan Collegiate to build that student agency that Dr. Richardson was referring to. If you'll look at that picture in the bottom left-hand corner, those are actually, that's an Avid class where students are tutoring other students. So we have kind of created and implemented a tutorial process to where students are leading those tutorial sessions with their peers. It's also strengthened rigor in our classes by implementing the WICER framework, which is something specific to Avid. WICER stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. So those are those instructional things that we want to implement, like I said a while ago, across all grade levels, all classes, all content areas. And I'll, I'll just tell you before I turn it over to Sarah, that my eighth-grade daughter is an SFA student, and she is also in Avid. So my wife and I have seen some tremendous growth come out of that Avid course in terms of those soft skills that students are learning during that, those eighth-grade years. So as a high school principal, I'm excited to know that those kids will come to the high schools with some of those soft skills already under their belt. So.
Okay, good. You didn't say, you didn't tell all the good, so I have a couple left. I'm Sarah Roeda, I'm the principal at Davila Middle School. We also have Avid. We were a part of that group, like Christina talked about, years ago. We did have Avid when Davila first opened. And then whenever it ended in 2011, it also ended at Davila. So now it's kind of come back to Davila again. Some of the things we talked about, like WICER, we do have WICER, but our philosophy and our goal is to have it school-wide. So it's not just the Avid students that are having the WICER strategy, it's kind of all of our students. We have a planner this year. I guess maybe in the previous years, they're kind of gone back and forth of having a planner, like a student planner. We have all of our students that have a planner. And in there, kind of trying to keep track of the homework, when your tests are, when is the STAR test, you know, different things like that, when we're taking the MAP test, you know, different things like that. On the team-building and motivational activities, as you see on the bottom, the kind of middle to the right, the Davila Avid Career Fair, one of my Avid teachers organized this. We had over 25 different, I say companies, it's all sorts of things, from Bryan ISD CTE, the Construction and Science Table was there. We also had, like, it was called Gold Star Barber Academy. We had about 10 to 15 kids actually got haircuts there. But then we had like Blend Nursing that came. And actually, like, you saw, like, things of blood and all sorts of neat and unique things. We also had BB Casa. We had, you know, 25 different things, kind of a, you know, hey, what can I do? So now, I've been in Avid almost a year, it was about, I don't know, six weeks ago. You know, I've been in Avid almost a year. Am I, could I really make it? Could I actually, you know, whether it's go to Blend College and be in nursing school? You know, I've been taught the strategies all year. Could I actually put it into play? And it was a huge success. Initially, the teacher said, oh, it's gonna be in the cafeteria, like five or eight different tables. I was like, okay. And then she said, oh, hey, can we go to the gym? Okay, Mr. Reeves, you know. And then it was like 25 tables. And so we're gonna have to work on where we're gonna put it, and different things like that. But it was a great success. And we also have the goal-setting. You know, our teachers, like our core content teachers, do goal-setting on benchmark scores and how they're gonna score on the, from the fall to the spring. Where my Avid teachers also are part of that as well, because a part of that tutoring is also teaching the strategies. Which areas are they weak? Which areas are they strong? You know, if you're, you can be a strong math student, but you can also be a strong science, you know, and our social studies or reading, you know, and how to, you know, just strategies like that in order to get, you know, better in their school life.
Okay. So one of the things that I bring to unite is Avid and Avid and Avid. And so it is difficult to understand how these things are, are separate. There are three different pathways in Avid. There are three separate solutions, and we're using all three in our district right now. And so this is actually an expansion in these three areas. So we have Avid Secondary, which is what Mr. Roberts and Ms. Roeda just spoke about. At Secondary, Avid is an elective course that students take, but then the campus can also use school-wide strategies in every content area. Avid Elementary, which you'll hear more about here in a few minutes, is going to be new to our district and used at elementary or intermediate campuses. The way this is different is that there's not an elective course that students enroll in. This is bringing Avid as a school-wide strategy for every single student, not just advanced academics. It should touch every student in the school. And it's about setting a, a school culture of academics and rigor and high expectations. And then Avid Excel, which is currently at SFA and Davila, serves our long-term emergent bilingual students. So students who have been emergent bilingual for five-plus years. This gives them very specific language acquisition skills that they work on throughout the year with the goal being not, while, that while they're in middle school, they're learning these skills, so that when they get to high school, they can then enter pre-AP and AP classes and be prepared to do that. So a little bit about the cost breakdown. Year one is always the biggest investment. You're investing in professional development of teams of teachers and administrators. You're investing in the curriculum materials. And then year two, it'll, it drops down a little bit. And then year three, it's more of a maintaining the site licenses. One of the things that Avid has really done well since I was an Avid teacher, when I was an Avid teacher, I literally got a file box full of books and was like, here, go teach Avid. And so I had to dig through these books and just figure it out. Avid now has a platform that offers amazing resources. So before, I would have told you, well, what do you get with that, that Avid site fee? I'm like, you, you get to use the Avid name. But now, there's actually a lot of resources behind that site fee. You get the Avid Digital Library. And the Avid elective teachers get a curriculum resource that will literally tell them, here's your first six weeks, here's your day one lesson. And so it gives them every single lesson that they need. They can certainly, as they get more comfortable and more confidence, they can mix it up and decide what to do. But for that brand-new teacher, it's gonna tell them every single day exactly what they do. You also get access to Avid Weekly, which is a system of articles that they build each month. It's not pre-made. Every month, they're adding new articles to it that include lesson plans, video clips, accommodations for ELL students, so that you are doing critical reading across all grade, all content areas. So the social studies teacher can grab an article from there, the science teacher can grab an article from there. It also includes strategies for teachers. The other thing to help campuses school-wide is that it, it has specific school-wide advisory lessons now that can be used school-wide or with a grade level. And then the Professional Development Library. And that's what I, I put a little picture of their icons up there. So if I'm a leader and I want professional development on writing, I click that writing icon, and it pulls up all the different professional developments available to me, and I pick which one I want. And it has the PowerPoint and the handouts you're gonna need, and the agenda. So it is a turnkey professional development for leaders to turn out to their faculty. And so that's an amazing thing for instructional coaches, principals, myself, who, who don't have a time to, to develop a lot of those things. And now, to talk about Avid Secondary is Mr. Lane Boobin.
Good evening. So you've heard a lot about Avid, and it's a, it's a very good program. And my charge is talk about why continue this. Well, there's about 400 kids that are enrolled in Avid at the middle school level right now, at the junior high level. And I was part of Avid, or I was on an Avid campus back, I guess I started here in 2002. So we had Avid all the way through most of my time at Rayburn, and we had a lot of success with it. Obviously, you've heard from Christina that there was a lot of success at Bryan High School with Avid. But it's, it's a great program to bring to kids. And it, it doesn't just affect the kids who are in the Avid elective, you know, if you're looking at the secondary campus. It, it affects the entire campus. There's a lot of good strategies that teachers can use, a lot of good professional development that teachers can tap into. But it also helps increase our involvement for kids in pre-AP, AP, IB courses. It's like Christina said, some of the kids who are kind of the quiet ones in the back, that you wouldn't assume that they would be in AP or IB classes, could very well benefit from this to get them the skills to enroll or to be in those classes. And so, that's another reason why it's expanded into the high school level. It also helps increase PSAT, SAT, and ACT participation. Again, you're providing tools for kids who would not normally do well on those tests, to give them the skills and the confidence to be successful on those, those tests. And we all know that those are areas that we desperately need to continue to work on and provide opportunities for those, those kids who may not have the opportunity to do that. And lastly, Avid students qualify for the DELL Scholarship, which is a $20,000 scholarship, which is pretty substantial. And for kids who wouldn't necessarily go to college, that's a, a good chunk of money. So coming out of it, that's, that's a potential part of Avid as well. But I, I come from knowing about Avid. I've seen the effects of it. It's, it's, it's a good program. I only saw that, well, I did see the effects of the high school, but I was able to see it in action when I was at middle school level. And it, it is great for kids. It gives them the tools that they need to be successful, not just in the classroom, but in life. And if they go on to a career or college, it gives them those tools to be successful as well. So, that's why we want to continue that at the secondary level.
Christina and Mr. Boobin.
Yes.
Do, do the kids, if the kids are in the program, do they download this information? I mean, to get like, how to study for the PSAT, how to write your resume dot, I mean, how, because it's different than when, you know, Lourdes was having it, and I was there like the days before we lost it the first time. So do the, do all students have access to these resources? Because we keep talking about the teacher resources. Or do the students have to be enrolled in the class and download the website? What?
So the, the Avid platform itself is only for the campuses to have those resources to deliver them to students.
Okay.
And so in the Avid classroom, yes, they do, you know, like Bryan Collegiate had a picture of their resume building. They do apply for colleges and scholarships and all of those things.
But it's not something that a student can take home and go to a website and pull down from Avid and do things on?
Not from Avid, but it's gonna be the Avid teacher who says,
Right.
Here's the resource, you know, go on College Board Big Future, and here's where you're gonna find this. Or, you know, here's our website for our, our local Bryan ISD scholarships, and help students through those steps. I can tell you, when my two oldest have gone through, you know, at that time at Bryan Collegiate, it was still PCC, but that Avid teacher, especially senior year, was probably a better mom to my children than I was, getting them, getting them through all of those deadlines, making sure that they had their stuff, and making sure their essays were written. It was invaluable to me as a parent to have somebody help them with all of that.
And she mentioned PCC, it's something I didn't really get into, but that's something that we currently are using right now at the high school level. It's called Pathways Career, College and Careers. And it does a fair job with preparing students and giving them the things that they need to, to be successful in these areas, but it's just not, not the same. Doesn't, doesn't have the depth of the breadth to, to do the same things.
Is it, is it fair to say that if a student is not enrolled in an Avid course, but if the teachers were willing to, to provide a ACT or SAT boot camp, come in and prep, come before school, after school, some kind of session where others could come in and get this type of prep, would that be a possibility?
Yeah, absolutely. And campuses will, will start to, you know, you start off kind of on a baby step in year one of what is, what's that school-wide strategy that we're gonna pull in. But each year, they're going, they're going to make that footprint a little bit bigger. And so, you know, you can decide, I mean, I remember, you know, English four, one of their assignments was everybody has to write your college essays. And that was an assignment in class. And so the campus will decide, what are those things that we need to do school-wide for every student, and what are those things that are gonna stay in the Avid classroom or be offered outside of school?
The, the other key thing that both of you mentioned was that this will generalize across all content areas. So the teachers can take these strategies and use them in math, science, social studies, English. It's very powerful. Many districts kept this. They did not abandon like we did. I'm not sure why we stopped it here, but I'm very familiar with this. And this is a proven method of ensuring success, not just for an at-risk student or an English language learner, but all students, especially if we want to target advanced academics, because you mentioned that. This is a perfect tool to get more kids. This is a perfect tool to get more kids to take these advanced courses and to be successful in them.
As a matter of fact, this summer, we're offering Avid Write Path training to all of our fifth through 12th grade social studies teachers, advanced or not advanced academics teachers. And what that PD focuses on is reading and writing in the social studies classroom to work on those skills. Because what we know is that ELA teachers can't do it by themselves. It's got to be reading and writing across the curriculum.
And this is just a general elective they would they would use for this class, the students? Is it it's an actual class? Is there an Avid class?
At secondary, yes.
Secondary, right?
Middle school, high school, there is an Avid elective that students go to as part of their schedule.
Just just a general elective? I mean, it's it's whatever.
It's a state elective. It does count towards graduation.
My son's doing office aide right now, and I really would have loved to have put him in Avid instead of an office aide. Just saying, just saying. Thank you.
Exactly. Yes, because a lot of kids, if you talk to students who've gone through this, they use these very strategies in college should they choose to go post-secondary. It's great for studies in, you know, college prep, for sure.
It is. It's because I will brag, my child's number eight at Rutter. But I don't know, he's starting A&amp;M, and I don't know that he knows how to study. And so this would have been very, very helpful. He knows how to pick up roles now.
That's true.
For the daily grades, he knows how to do that, but not not.
On a sign note, I can tell you, I did my dissertation on on this topic. And yes, all the students that I interviewed, they said that it was the number-one thing that they used in college was all of these skills that they were taught through Avid or PCC.
Awesome.
So let me, I'm just making sure I understand this. Or at least, I think I do, but it's it's you have to be enrolled at the secondary level. So if you're a student and we have all these great resources and you're not enrolled, then you can't access the resources at all that are for the students, or you can?
No, you can. And so this it'll be up to the campus to decide what are the strategies that we are going to use school-wide in every content area. So for example, focus note-taking. You know, that was something that when I was an Avid teacher, we had every classroom. I actually made, you know, back in paper days, I made piles and boxes of of note paper for every teacher to have in their classroom so that students could take the same kind of notes in every single classroom. And so the campuses will decide, you know, based on our campus needs, based on what we see in our students, what are those strategies that we're going to work with first and then add on each year?
So the expense to the district basically is not dependent on how many kids enroll, it's just the campus?
Yeah.
Okay.
And like Ms. Waller said, there's not actually resources, correct, for the kids?
Not for the students.
It comes from the teachers to the.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And used to, like she was saying, because the Avid instructor, we were in the same, we office together, talking about Lourdes. And so that's how I gained a lot of that information. And, you know, used to, it was handouts, you know, in the old days. And we would tell those kids, get a tub. You put every one of these handouts in that tub. And you take that tub to college with you because you don't need to reinvent the wheel. You've got everything you need in this tub. And so now, it's just everything is digital.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the strategies that Avid uses is binders to teach organization. And one of the things that they are, Avid is teaching teachers, is how to do an e-binder so that students learn how to collect all of those and keep all of those digital documents safe. And so that's also another choice that a campus can make is instead of being paper-based, to be more digital-based.
Are parents allowed at these classes? Sign me up, please.
And so I have the the breakdown of the the first three years of implementation. And again, I've already I talked about what those site fees include. And now, Dr. Caperton and Dr. Velez will talk about Avid Elementary. And this would be this would be new for our district.
Good evening. A little shorter on here. So as mentioned, there are very many components that I find appealing that I'm sure Dr. Caperton also find appealing. So these are just a few of those components that personally wanted to highlight. We talked about the goal-setting and the data monitoring, which definitely creates that level of accountability. And for me, what's most appealing is I saw a video of kindergartners that had data binders that had goals that they had set based on their data that they took, you know, on a daily, weekly basis. And I thought, oh, my goodness, those could be my kindergartners. So that was super appealing to me just because looking at that data helps identify and close those gaps earlier on, which will definitely help equip our students. And so, you know, by us doing that, our students are developing that student agency that will allow them those opportunities to apply for advanced academics when they get to Jane Long at the intermediate level and, you know, just be, you know, set off on that right footing. Also, looking at empowering them with the academic tools and the confidence that they, to meet those high expectations, to set them up for looking at careers, that future careers that they might want to pursue. What does that look like? What kind of studies would I need to be involved in? What kind of grades would I need to have to be able to qualify to enroll in those universities? So, you know, like my student earlier that mentioned that she wants to be an astronaut. So she would be researching, you know, that career and, you know, the best universities and the studies that she would need to be able to get herself on that right footing for that possibility. And I think specifically, I want to speak to how this is, this would be something that all of my students would be able to benefit from. I see pockets of this on my campus. I have phenomenal teachers that do goal-setting and data monitoring with their students that, you know, research and have data planners and all that good stuff. But I want this to be for all of my students. I don't want it just to be for those that are fortunate enough to be in those teachers' classrooms. So it, to me, it would allow my Jones students the opportunity to to have that student agency, no matter whose class they're in, and to be able to to grow and fulfill their career dreams, whatever they might be.
You said all the good things. I'm Desiree Caperton, the principal at Long. Having, sorry, go Lobos! I was going to say it, but I know you probably are always sick of it. Every time, go Lobos! So having done pre-K through 12, I've been at Bryan High School when it started in 98. And I worked with Ruth. Was at Bryan Collegiate. It does provide all these soft skills for our kids because at elementary, we will be giving the strategies to all of our students. And so it's nice, I think what we all want at the end of the day is for our students to have opportunities, empower them to have opportunities. So I know like for Alman and I, we're really excited to help scaffold this down a little bit for the high schools. And then also, as a leader, working with my staff to have a common language. We're all doing X, we're all doing Y, we're all accountable to keep our kids accountable for the same thing. So I am very excited about Avid coming to elementary.
And Dr. Caperton is here representing all three intermediates, by the way. So it would be all three intermediates and Jones Elementary. And, oh, go back. And so the same thing as secondary, the the cost breakdown, and you can see that it goes down each year as and then we're just maintaining that site fee.
Why is Rutter so much higher? I'm sorry, I was going to ask you on the other slide. Why is Rutter so much higher?
Rutter and Bryan High are actually the same cost. And then because they would actually be in year one, so it's that big kind of upfront cost. Whereas Bryan Collegiate, Davila, and SFA have already are in year one now. And so theirs is is lower in year two.
Oh, so Bryan and Rutter were the same? I'm sorry, I guess I missed that. Okay, thank you.
And so the the next part that we're looking to expand is Avid Excel. And this is, Dr. Malina and Dr. Caperton, come back up. And this is for our emergent bilingual students.
Hello. One thing we wanted to talk about was when you're looking at emergent bilingual students, after fourth grade, if students have not reclassified and what that means is if they're if they haven't met reclassification criteria. And what that is, is if they haven't met what they call advanced high on all four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing on the Tellpass Assessment, which tests for English proficiency from the state of Texas, and have done on the STAR Assessment for reading and writing approaches level and have a favorable teacher recommendation. If they haven't met that criteria for reclassification and have have met for English proficiency, then they have not reclassified. And if they have not done that by fourth grade, then they're determined to be long-term EL students. So by looking at five years plus after four, fourth grade, they're determined to be long-term EL students. So it's very, very appropriate when we're thinking about fifth grade, even down to fifth grade, we're talking about sixth grade here, but even down to fifth grade, to start an Avid Excel program to looking at the academic language, fortifying the academic language for for our ESL students.
Okay, go Lobos again. So this is a sixth-grade class. And so it will tie in with the strategies that we bring with Avid. And what I love about this for our EBs is that it's intentional. Like there will be routines and strategies to intentionally give our kids language, you know, with writing and reading and speaking and listening to it. And I feel like amping up that rigor is really going to help our students because we know statewide, this is a problem with long-term ELLs. So by the time they come into sixth grade, most of our EBs are from Bryan, coming out of Jones since kindergarten. So they come to us in sixth grade, you know, year seven. And so I feel like this really will give that support to push our kids to no longer be classified as an EB. So I'm really excited about this as well. And I have some really great teachers at Jane Long that I've picked for this if this all goes through. And I feel like it will be powerful in the classroom.
Have any questions about Avid Excel?
I guess the only question that I have left is, is there anything we're currently using that we think we really don't need anymore because this is going to supplant that?
So the way Avid Excel, I'll let Dr. Malina help as well. I'm going to call you back up here. Avid Excel will be part of their intervention course at the intermediate level. And so I don't know if if there's anything similar to it.
No, one thing that we are working with is Summit K-12. But we're on the very cusp of using that as an intervention software. So we haven't used it fully to have that supplement at this particular junction. So no, it would not be a conflict at this time.
And one of the really powerful things about Avid Excel, and you can see the routines and strategies, is every day, they're using those same things to get students in the habit of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. One of the really unique things is the scholars group. So while the Avid that we've been talking about has talked about tutorials, Avid Excel has scholars groups. And they actually pull an article every week. And those students in their scholar groups, their small group, they read, they use their critical reading strategies, they make their comments, their annotations, and then they discuss it. And so it's combining all of those things together, and they do that every single week. And so imagine, you know, a student in that class for an entire school year, how many articles that they will have read and discussed and listened to each other. And so practicing using those sentence stems and all of those, the EL strategies that we've been focused on with sidelets and and other things.
Well, you you sold me on Avid. I was just making sure, I mean.
They are great salespeople.
Yeah, y'all are.
I'm glad they're not selling condos.
We hear y'all come much more often to to add stuff as opposed to, hey, can we delete something? So I just wanted to make sure.
You're wearing them down. We will eliminate PCC because that, as Mr. Boobin mentioned.
Yes, as it moves up.
Yes, once when Avid was discontinued in Bryan ISD, I wasn't working here at the time. But what I understand is they felt the void because they had a proven model. So to to replace it, they came up with a locally-developed program. They had to write their own curriculum, their strategies, their training, et cetera, which was a huge burden on our staff and our teachers to take something in development from scratch. So by removing PCC and going with this proven model, this is going to simplify things. And I think Dr. Caperton said it best, this is intentional. This is standardized. This is consistent. So that continuity, starting in elementary all the way up through high school, will be very powerful. I think this is a huge investment in children and with a proven model.
Did y'all say our neighbors, I'm sorry, our neighbors to the south are using it as well? Just called.
So here's what's funny about that. Yes, they are using it. And they actually started it by visiting Bryan High because we were a demonstration site at the time.
So they kept it all these years?
Yes.
So we've been we've been without it, what, about a decade?
About that, yes, ma'am.
About 10 years? So what you were just talking about, the writing skills that we were talking about in Excel? Well, apparently, the STAR test is going to be going to exactly that, where they'll look at the prompt, go in, dig out information and put in there. And they'll have to do it electronically. So it'd be perfect. Because those kids will be working on it from fifth grade on up. And they'll have those skills. That's really.
And I'm really excited, you know, Jones is going to be our trailblazer elementary that's going to try this and and see how it works. That we will have kids since kinder who have experienced these skills all the way into high school. And what a stronger student and a more empowered student that that will make when they arrive into secondary.
I I'm all for Avid. Don't get me wrong, but this is a $200,000 investment. And and I know it's nationally-normed and it has success and it has studies. I want to know how we're going to show success and how we're going to measure that success over a period of time. And I think that goes beyond just asking y'all. I I think it also comes back into our goal-setting as a board. You know, we we consider and talk about how how great it is, but we need to know how we're going to measure the impact on the student. And I'm, you know, off the top of my head, I know Avid isn't specifically, you know, a math-related skill, but I'm thinking algebra eighth grade. Right? How, you know, how do we increase the enrollment of algebra eighth grade? Because that's a pivotal time for college success.
That that is actually a perfect example. Avid has a very extensive data collection process, which our data services has been working on some on-point reports for us to get that. And one of the indicators is how many students are enrolled in eighth-grade algebra as well as how many students are successfully completing eighth-grade algebra for exactly that point that you made.
And and I think that it's it's important to get that information to us as we start to move into the goal-setting plan so we have that base analysis, you know, early this fall. And we can start to build, build where we are now and and measure it as it as it grows. But but I, you know, overall, I'm I'm excited to bring Avid back. And I, you know, think it's a a great program with a lot of a lot of impact. I just want to make sure that we're 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 keeping up. If we're going to ask the kids to make very specific goals and align to very specific goals, I think that we, as a district, should not be afraid to set some very specific goals through the program as well.
And one thing that's exciting as well is that Gear Up is also going to be a partner in Avid, that they are actually paying for Kelly Armstrong, the Gear Up coordinator, to be a second Avid District Director so that she will directly be at Bryan High, at Rutter, helping those teachers, helping those administrators get Avid off to the right start and helping them implement successfully.
That that teacher that Ruthie has mentioned by first name a couple of times hit me up right after church and said, why did y'all get rid of Avid? And I said, nobody told me. But she wasn't very happy with that answer, but you know.
You can tell her it's coming back.
Because, yeah, you brought it back. Tell her you brought it back personally.
Tell her she can come out of retirement. Boy, wouldn't that be great?
All right, thank you, Dr. Christus, Christus, excuse me, Richardson.
Thank you.
And thank you, campus leadership. All right, I'll entertain a motion. I move approval of the purchase for Avid as presented.
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Benford and seconded by Mrs. Waller for the board to approve the purchase of Avid as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
It squeaked by. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we would discuss and consider approval of the purchase over $50,000 for Goal Book.
I just want to say you cleared the room.
She's not feeling the love right now.
I had all this support for saving money. Now I want to spend it, and I feel all alone.
Just turn off the cameras. Just we're not buying anything else today.
Exactly.
Well, I am here today to also spend money, not just save money, as I did earlier. But Goal Book is something that was referred to earlier with the Executive Board Committee minutes. And so I want to expand on that a little bit to show you a response to teachers' voice. Ms. Caravan offers an opportunity for our teachers to speak out in a safe environment, to tell the needs that they have in checking in with the soup. And in those meetings and along with our teacher advisory committee for our special ed teachers, we keep hearing a very common voice that.
we keep hearing a very common voice that our special ed teachers need part of their workload relieved from them. That it's not about not wanting to serve students, but it's about that extra requirement, being a special ed teacher with those federal requirements with, I hate to say it, but paperwork. And they're bogged down with it. And the consistent message is that they need support with those roles, responsibilities, and duties that they have. Specifically, we are looking at a program called Goalbook. And this program is a program that is designed to not just alleviate the paperwork side of special education, but it also ensures the compliance of our federal regulations in many different ways. Mostly, it is to stay compliant with what's in a student's individual education plan. But also, it meets some of our, helps support some of our requirements for maintenance of effort, which I'll make sure that we get into that and I don't use too many technical terms. But, but this would support 265 teachers in a special education role and alleviate something from them, which in turn does take something off of their plate with the duties and responsibilities that they have. So what is Goalbook? Goalbook is a software program that helps teachers build the student's annual goals that a student must have if they are in special education. For instance, if you are a student receiving speech services, you have a very identified need with your speech needs and an annual goal is built for you so that you can work towards that goal throughout the year to correct the issues that you may be having, whether that's an articulation or speech and language need. With that, though, that goal is very specific to the student. It is written off of the evaluation. It's very individualized to the student. Goalbook will provide a framework for that goal for the student that is then editable and personalizable to the student based on their needs. Every student in special education has these plans. And if you have multiple disabilities, then you have multiple goals. And these are the cumbersome pieces of the paperwork that teachers are bogged down with. This software program will help build that statement. And there is an example statement there in the box where you can see where the student's goal is written by a specific date. They will achieve a specific skill. And then below that, what this program would offer is levels of support to help get to that goal. If the child needs a mild level of support, moderate level of support, or an intense level of support, that drop-down box will then cater to the child's level of support that is needed without the teacher having to go back and look at skills and strategies to put into that statement. It auto-populates it based on the level of need for the child. And then over to the side, what you can see, there will be several hyperlinked opportunities for the teacher to go deeper with the support that this program would provide to them. And every goal that is created for the student now also has a progress tracking sheet. So that will satisfy the requirement to not just meet the goal, but track that progress that the student has made throughout the year. So those are automatically generated for whatever goal you set for that child. The next piece of the software would then provide also, within that annual goal, a benchmark, which are your objectives that you try to meet throughout the year to get to that annual goal. So on top of writing an annual goal, the teacher then must now create benchmarks. By this time, I expect the child to make this much progress towards that goal. And this program will automatically divvy up that goal and create benchmarks throughout the year that are adequate and expected amount of growth for that child. And again, what you're going to see is you have these hyperlinked sections that allow you to click on it to see additional strategies, additional levels of support, additional progress, tracking sheets, or even the lesson plans that you can generate to meet this goal. Additionally, you're going to see that there is a library of services or a library of strategies for the student, for the teacher to build for the student. So if you have a goal that the student has a behavior goal and they need work on de-escalation and they need those calming strategies, what you see here is a library of resources where that teacher can click and look at the different strategies that are in this library, identify what works for that child, and add that into the plan. And then what you also see with this is if you identify a strategy and you work with the child and you see that it's successful, you can also send this strategy electronically, not just to the teacher, but potentially to the parent, the assistant principal, the counselor, anybody who works with this student. And they do not necessarily have to have a Goalbook username and password because it's sent to them as a PDF. And you can put a message with it that says, I found this strategy. I've been working with the student. It's very successful. I wanted to share it with you. Maybe you can implement it at home and create this consistency for the child. Highly successful. The biggest piece of this is we don't have a software program that helps build these. We have a software program where we enter the information, but we do not have a software program that helps build the framework. And what you see with this, when you go from, all the way from the evaluation to the progress monitoring of the goal and objectives and everything in between, there's an alignment that is built that goes straight from the evaluation to the child's needs, to their progress, to the reporting of it. And it's very streamlined, very consistent, and very aligned. So along with this, we have been talking with Goalbook about an early start. We want to make sure that if we implement this at Bryan ISD, that we don't just implement this at the beginning of a fiscal year or July 1. We want to get an early start on this. And we have some professional development days coming up that we can share this with our teachers and make sure that they're trained early and they know about the information and get that done during our TE Day in May, on May 30th. But then also have some additional training opportunities this summer and at the beginning of the school year to ensure that we've got an early start and a jump start on this. And then also, we would have that ongoing PD. If we recognize that the teachers are struggling with one concept with this or they're asking for additional help, that we can provide that. Excuse me. So next comes Surprise Tag. It's an amazing product. But it does come with a pretty heavy lift as far as the financial side goes. But like I said, we would be taking something off of the teacher's plate with the time that they put towards this. So we are looking, excuse me. We are looking at funding this out of IDEA-B, which is our federal grant for special education, which those funds are designed specifically for purchasing items for our teachers and students in special education. The breakdown of that is about $600 per teacher that would be using this. And to me, that adds to the investment that the board has already provided to our teachers with that $2,000 stipend that our special education teachers, thank you, that our special education teachers already receive for being a teacher here at Bryan ISD. And then with a little bit of the shifting of those funds, what we'll see is that we also satisfy our maintenance of effort requirement with special education. And when you're dealing with federal funds in special education, there is a requirement that whatever you spent in your state and local funds this year in special education, you have to spend that much or more on special education the next school year. With the amount of students that are entering into our special ed programs, what we're needing to do is make sure that we stay caught up with our maintenance of efforts. And this would be a great investment to ensure that we do that.
So while you're taking a break, that is an annual cost then?
That is an annual cost. Now, if we did a multi-year contract, we would see an additional savings on that of about $12,000 to $15,000. But this is just for a one-year contract. We wanted to ensure that, first of all, we'll get usage reports and ensure that our teachers are using it. I don't think we're going to have a problem with that, with the overwhelming voice that we've had asking for this. But then too, it allows us to ensure that we've got the right start with our professional development. And we'll come to the board next year with a request, potentially for a multi-year contract that would reduce those funds.
I think we're somewhat as a board aware of the challenges y'all face just keeping special ed staffed and obviously all the help we can give them that's going to work for them. We absolutely need to be doing this sort of thing. Are y'all familiar with other districts using this?
Yes. In fact, the previous district that I was in, we were onboarding it there because our teachers had asked for some support in that area. And I had actually visited three other school districts that were using this. And there are, are other software programs. So we vetted more than one program to make sure that we were utilizing the funds with the absolute best program that we can provide. This is not the top-of-the-line Cadillac. There are more expensive ones and I can bring those to the table if you'd like. But we did try to stay fiscally responsible and make sure that we're getting a good program and best bang for our buck on that. Additionally, sitting in the seat of interviewing teachers, there are times that we use a program like this to show that we have an advantage over some of our neighbor districts where a teacher may be deciding between two districts. And once they know that we have specific programs to support them, we end up winning out over that hire because they know that this is a program that will support them.
Do, if a student is going to transfer, do we just print all these pages out and send with them? I mean, how does this information go with the student to another district?
So one of the perks of this program is that it will talk eventually with our program Success Ed, which is our paperwork program for special education. And so either you copy and paste the information into Success Ed, which is our individual student paperwork for special education. You either copy and paste it directly into the fields or the blanks, or eventually when they get the crosswalk finished and they can directly link it, it goes right into that software that we already use, which then also has a student transfer capability so that when students transfer to another school district, it's automatically sent as part of their IEP.
So if we get a student from another district and it's just a file full of papers upside down and sideways, at the ard, we can decipher through all that, sit down there with the parents and the caseworker and just start typing it all in and putting it all in and get it all organized first go-around?
That is exactly what it would do. What you would do is you would take all the individualized data that the child has, put it in. And you can even use our MAP data that we use for all of our students in the district or any data that they come in with. Any strength, any weakness that they have, plug it in and it generates a framework statement for you that you can then edit and individualize and move forward. And it is exactly that simple.
You, you had me at compliance, but on top of that, I, I think it's also, you know, we're, we're fairly open as a board, tell us what you need. And so, you know, it's, and it sounds like you've, you've done the due diligence. The team has gone through and, and performed the due diligence. And, you know, the, the one thing that, you know, that, this is a, this is a nice price tag. You know, no doubt, and I'm, no doubt there are bigger and better programs. If this feels like the right fit, then I'm all for it. But, you know, in the future, if there's something that combines multiple things and, you know, we're, we'll argue over the price and we'll give you grief over the price. But, you know.
I can handle it.
If, if it's the right fit, we'll get there.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We want to come to that happy dance party that teachers are going to have when they find out that.
Yes.
This is, hopefully. We haven't voted yet.
All right. So on that note, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the purchase of Goalbook in the amount of $157,675 as presented. Second.
Thank you.
All right. A motion was made by Mr. Gonzalez and seconded by Mr. McCall for the board to approve the purchase of Goalbook in the amount of $157,675 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The board will now convene in closed session for chapter 551, Texas Government Code 551-074, Personnel Matters, and Texas Government Code 551-0821. The time is now 8:22 PM. The time is now 8:22 PM.
The board reconvened in open session at 9:20 p.m. No action was taken in closed session. There would be no further business. Let the record show that the meeting adjourned at 9:20 p.m. Meeting adjourned.